I have 6:30. At this time, I call the Lancaster City Council meeting to order for July 27, 2021. Mr. Harris, can I have a call, LaRoe, please?
Yes, Mr. Vice President. Mr. Royo.
Here.
Ms. Bakke.
Here.
Ms. Craig.
Here.
Ms. Diaz.
Here.
Mr. Garcia Melina.
Here.
Mr. Soto.
Here.
And President Smith-Wadeell.
President Smith-Wadeell has been excused this evening. Okay, as we stand now for the Pledge of Allegiance, please. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, and just as proud of all. Real call members.
Actually, we just did that, Mr. Vice President.
Oh, I'm sorry. Approval of the minutes for July 13, 2021.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Harris?
Mr. Royo.
Aye.
Ms. Bakke.
Aye.
Ms. Craig.
Aye.
Ms. Diaz.
Aye.
Mr. Garcia Melina.
Aye.
And Mr. Soto.
Aye. Moving on to Proclaimations, Honors, and Awards and Recognitions, Mr. Harris, do we have them?
We do not, Mr. Vice President.
Thank you, Mr. Harris. At this time, we move forward to put a comment for those who have reserved prior to the meeting to speak. Please keep in mind that you'll be held to three minutes' time to speak. I do not need your home address, I just need your name and your residence. No house numbers, please. Do we have anybody to speak, Mr. Harris?
We do, Mr. President. Josh Weber had contacted me in advance. And apparently, Mr. Weber is not here.
Not here? Okay. So we move on to reports of our council, reports requested by council? Do we have anything this evening, Mr. President? I mean, Mr. Harris?
Yes, Mr. Vice President, we have an update on the Neighborhood Engagement.
Welcome.
How are you?
Good.
Good. Thank you for the opportunity to be here and give you an update. I know it's been a little bit, and there's a lot that's been happening in our department, so I'm excited to be here and share with you all. All right. Mr. Harris, can you go to the next slide, please? So this is a vision statement for strong neighborhoods, and just, I always like sharing this at the beginning of presentations, because it really connects to like the foundation work that we do in Department of Neighborhood Engagement. So Lancaster's diverse and vibrant neighborhoods are welcoming places that foster connections. Among our residents, residents are actively engaged in the day-to-day life of their neighborhoods to create and sustain strong community. And so the words highlighted in black are really the work that we've been focused on for the last three years. Diversity and inclusion is really built in to all of the programming that we have in our department. Welcoming, we are welcoming city certified is one of the policies that we manage in our department. Fostering connections, working through community leaders, hosting biweekly calls with our neighborhood leaders, some of them are represented here this evening. Engagement through our engagement programs of Love Your Block, NLA, Community and Police Working Group, and various town hall meetings. We continue to increase engagement in the city. And so today, you're going to hear a little bit about how the next focus is about sustaining the work that we're doing, and so that's part of our updates. Next slide, please. So the Dunn timeline, oops, tagline, forgot to delete that part. So in 2018, as you guys know, Love Your Block program was launched, neighborhood groups, we started to work with neighborhood groups. And internally here, we launched neighborhood working groups. So that happened in 2018, amongst a lot of other things, but those were like the three things from 2018. In 2019, we became welcoming city certified, we started the Community and Police Working Group, and we also launched Neighborhood Leaders Academy. In 2020, COVID, our team transitioned into communications team, we launched a public participation platform, since we couldn't directly engage with residents, we needed another avenue to communicate with them and some of the work that we were doing. So Engage Lancaster was born. We were awarded the work, an award through census work and combating through COVID as well, still increasing our census response rate, so that was really exciting. And we started Beaver Street Working Group and working with residents, where we've been working on a revitalization project on Beaver Street and some other initiatives with a local neighborhood leader, Kirsten Krimmel. So in 2021, we've merged some departments and some programs, so we're going to talk a little bit about Loop, Visitor Center, PACE, our engagement team as it's growing, and something that's really exciting, we just found out, and so I'm going to, this is like very new, and we're going to, you'll learn a little bit more, but our, we were just awarded an AmeriCorps Vista program for the city. So we will have 11 AmeriCorps Vistas working here in the city, and we'll be really focusing on engagement and equity work throughout all of our departments. So this is like a really big deal for us. And so in 2022, all of these programs are like finalized, we're starting to build our team, so we're really going to be working on citywide engagement planning, increasing internal engagement processes, external engagement, and now with our connection with Loop is increasing events and overall engagement team there. Next slide, please. So some project updates, Love Your Block, we've had a total of 84 grants, in 2021, we've had 56. And so that really increased because we transitioned our grants to $500 mini-grants related to COVID. So a lot of wonderful work, and I know you guys have been following. Neighborhood Leaders Academy, we're up to 76 total participants in the program. It started off in 2019, some of those participants are here, 11 of them in 2020, 39 participants were JP McCaskey students, and then in 2021, we just finished our class of 26 participants. You can also, I'm not sure, I put the cover of Sunday's paper there, but we've had, we had four of our Neighborhood Leaders Academy featured on the cover of the Sunday paper and talking a little bit about the program and how it's impacted them. Next slide, please. And I can pass that around here. Thank you. So all this work is really great, and like, I feel like we're ahead of the trend for other cities, which is really exciting. So I just want to share that we've been highlighted on GovLaunch, and so they're dedicating a whole month where they've interviewed quite a few of the directors here, and they're going to talk about the work that's happening here in the city of Lancaster. And so that's a global program, GovLaunch, it's a wiki. We were also featured in the Atlas, related to our public participation platform. There is, in your folders there, I included the articles that I'm sharing with you now, as well as the Urban Institute report on Love Your Block that also highlights, really like, highlights the city of Lancaster and the work that we've been doing. Lancaster newspaper, Harvard Kennedy School of Business has also highlighted some of our work, and we're working on a case study, as well as with Johns Hopkins University, all related to engagement. Next slide, please. And so the department and program merger, and so I just want to give thanks to the leadership team here and our coworkers, and some of them are present here behind me. So Chris Delfts has been so kind to, through the COVID process, we saw a lot of synergies, and I know, Councilwoman Bakke, you don't really like that word, between Loop and the Department of Neighborhood Engagement. And so we know that that merger was great, we spoke to Chris, everything's been, we've just finalized our vision planning there. So that was an area that came from CPED into the Department of Neighborhood Engagement, as well as PACE Neighbors. So that's a program that's under Public Art, and so PACE stands for Public Art and Community Engagement. And so naturally, it's about the cultivation of artists here in our community, and so that was a good connection to the work that we're doing. So we've been working with Chalene, the PACE manager. And from Business Administration, that's moved over to the Department of Neighborhood Engagement, is the City Hall reception area, and part of our welcoming city is really about how we're welcoming residents into City Hall. So that was a natural connection to the work that we're doing. So we're really excited to work with Milta, who's the front, the front area reception, receptionist. So next slide, please. So staff hiring, there's a lot of movement that's happening in our department. So in the Dunn area, we have a programs manager that's funded through CBDG, again, thanks to Chris Delft and his team. And this position's going to be really focused on Love Your Block, Neighborhood Leaders Academy, and increasing a lot of that program, so we can have more program participants come through the programming. We have the AmeriCorps Vista program, again, I just shared with you, so that'll add 11 new members to our engagement team. And then, one thing that I do want to highlight, so if you see Zira, Zira has been full-time promoted to language access, so she's not, typically, she was focused on administrative services for our team, or administrative functions, and some language access for interpretation, but we've actually made that position full-time for her. And so, related to Loop and the Visitor Center, we are hiring a Visitor Center manager, it's an existing position, and we are interviewing right now for a Communications and Marketing Manager, which is also an existing position, so why it's moved over into Mayor's Office of Communication. And we are also going to be posting for a Development Administrator, someone that's going to be fundraising for Loop. So in total, we're going to be having 26 team members under the Department of Neighborhood Engagement, which is really exciting. So the next slide, please. So Loop update, we just finalized the vision plan, and so we have a vision plan for like the next 12 months. The focus there is really going to be onboarding the team, talking about our core values and engagement, and increasing programming. We have some minor facility improvements that we have to address on their first floor, and we're going to be focused on a communications strategic plan for reopening and business support. So I do want to take this moment and introduce Annie Weeks, who is the Director for Lancaster Office of Promotion, and she wants to introduce the team that's here as well.
Hi, everyone. Annie Weeks, thanks for having me, I'm the Director of the Lancaster Office of Promotion. So we're located in the Visitor Center, right next to Central Market, and come on in and see us, we love seeing visitors, we're starting to see a big increase uptick in tourism, so we get visitors from all over the world. Here tonight is Alyssa and Lena that work at the Visitor Center. We are also heavily involved in planning and promoting the city's largest events, so that includes Red Rose Run, and if anybody went to celebrate Lancaster this year, we had nine bands out there, nine local bands, food trucks, and we really just try to, you know, bring excitement and energy and all things that people love about Lancaster City. So, anything that happens on public space goes through our office, so it might be a rally that needs electric, or up to like Latin Music Festival, and everything in between. So we do have several events throughout the year, and we do marketing as well.
Thank you, Annie, don't go anywhere. And so, I just want to say, it's been a pleasure working with Annie, she has accepted a new position right down the street, we're still going to be working closely together, and I think Alyssa has a gift for her, and just wanted to give her a round of applause for the work that she's been doing for us. Thank you, Alyssa. Thank you. We'll take a turn a little bit. Okay, thanks. So, everyone loves the events in Lancaster, and that's the team that puts it together, so we're really appreciative of them. So the next slide, thank you. And so Mayor's Neighborhood Week, we hosted Mayor's Neighborhood Week for their first time, a little bit different, we attended four quadrant walking tours with the ELT team, as well as staff, and we also hosted four quadrant neighborhood gatherings, meetings, and updates, where we were there with residents. So the next slide. And so I can give you a little bit more information, but just for a general overview, we collected information as we were on the walking tours, so we were able, the purpose of the walking tour was really to connect with residents, you know, check out our neighborhoods, see, be part of the neighborhoods of the work, you know, of the people that we're serving. And so through some of those walks, we also encountered some, some things that we need, we're reporting, so we, there was some related to housing, there was about 16 housing-related issues that we were able to address. Other really is lighting or signage, from the report that I was looking. ... crossing kind of concerned streets, we had five issues that we saw, trees, areas that we can plant trees, areas that we had empty tree wells, were 14, and then for a ground total of 55 different things that we were kind of addressing as we were walking out. But really, the primary purpose was to connect with residents and talk to them. Next slide, please. And so the next plans for our department is really related to onboarding, we're going to be really focusing on building that team, looking at a citywide engagement plan for 2022, communications planning with the new communications and marketing person that's coming on board, and a development plan for the work that we're doing and engagement. And that is really how we are going to be sustaining the work that we're doing. And that's all that I have, thank you. Oh, I have one more slide. Okay, and so this is where it started. Do you guys remember this, for those council members? So in 2018, when we started this program, it started with Howard Avenue, and here is the Howard Avenue team, this is literally the team that we had our first block party, we knocked on doors, residents came out and said, yes, I want to be a part of this, so if you guys can stand up, I really appreciate all of you, and I'm going to talk to you. So from the work, from the work of the team, literally, in two weeks, they organized a block party, they organized a neighborhood group, keep on standing if you can, they organized a neighborhood group, they talked to the residents on the street, the number one concern was the quality of the street and the sidewalks, because we had some residents that were handicapped. You brought those concerns here, we applied for a grant, now we're going to be repaving the street and the sidewalk, and you can see that State Awards Revitalization Grants in Lancaster and Mountjoy, that's because of the team that's here. Valerie, you're part of the Mayor's Strategic Plan, there's a whole video, if you get a chance, go to Lancaster Block by Block, and so you can talk about, you could listen to Valerie and listen to, and see videos of Howard Avenue, and I just can't thank you guys enough. So this is where we started, and now look at all the stuff that we've done, I think I'm going to get emotional. So, we have Valerie Bradley that's here, we have Missy Martinez, the Hershey's, thank you so much for all the work that you're doing, and two members that aren't here right now is Jennifer Powell and Mike McKenna. So if you guys can come up, I just want to take a picture with you and the mayor, if that's okay.
Millsy.
Thank you.
I have a question for you.
Yes.
Looking at some of the grants, you said that sometimes they're, I guess, given out in increments of 500. So we're working with Carmen, obviously, is there any way that she would be able, in order for us to get, at least have the opportunity to get a dumpster?
If there's, so when we release the grant again, if there are residents that want to work in a cohort, and that could be a community project, yes.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm. We're almost there on that one, right?
Well, I got a gang of people.
Councilwoman Diaz and I are working on a project together with a resident, a local resident. Any questions? We're good? All right, well, thank you so much for the opportunity.
Thank you, Millsy. There was another item on the agenda, which has been pulled, a Fire Station Construction Project Update, that will be reported a later date. So now we move into interim reports by committee. Do we have any?
We do not, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Harris. And that moves us into the legislative agenda, we have three items on the, on the docket. First item, Administration Bill 14, 2021, and this is for final passage.
Yes, Mr. Vice President. An ordinance of the City Council of the city of Lancaster, amending Chapter 55, the Code of the City of Lancaster, Officers and Employees, Article 5, Mayor, Section 5521, compensation, providing for the repeal of inconsistent ordinances, providing for the separability of the ordinance, and providing that the ordinance shall take effect in accordance with the laws of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. The title, Mr. Vice President.
I will entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Hopkes, do I have anything to report? Mr. Hopkins, do you have anything to report, please?
Thanks, Mr. Vice President. So I believe every council member, I think maybe Counselor Diaz wasn't at the committee meeting, but I'll try to give a brief summary of basically what this ordinance is doing. Typically, City Council has approved ordinance, ordinances on a four-year increment basis to address changes in the salary for the Office of the Mayor. In, when those ordinances are done, they must be adopted by a certain period of time prior to the, the next term of mayor, regardless of who is in that office. And the reason for that is there's a state law that requires that the ordinances or the salary changes be adopted prior to the, the term of the next mayor or in this, in some cases, you know, in City Council as well. So what this ordinance does is actually changes that process a little bit in that it, it is changing the salary for Office of the Mayor for 2022, which is the first year of the next term, making that salary flat. So no change from 2021 salary. But for every year thereafter, it would have the salary for the Office of the Mayor increase at the Consumer Price Index increase. And it's an amount that's published in the Pennsylvania Bulletin each year because that's how legislators, the governor, and other appointed officers at the state level, that's how their salaries are changed. And what this does is sets up a process where that, those increases would happen without any action by City Council, not just for the next term for Office of the Mayor, but on an ongoing basis. So this is something that City Council would not have to address again. Again, the, the increases after 2022 would be in accordance with a Consumer Price Index increase. And the only way that would change would be two things. One, if the legislature decided to freeze salaries at the state level, the Mayor's Office salary would also freeze. And that was the case at the state level for 2021. And it's why we're in this ordinance proposing freezing the salary for Office of the Mayor in 2022. The other way that this would change is because this is an ordinance adopted by City Council and in the city code, a future City Council could decide to make a change, not for the next term of the Office of the Mayor, but on an ongoing basis for other terms in the future.
Any questions from council? Any questions from the public? Yes, please. Please come up to the podium and state your name. You have three minutes.
Hi, I'm Jessica Lopez, 437 East Marion Street. And I believe the last council meeting we had about the salaries used tabled off of the decision that basically our economy isn't at the point where we should be making decisions about who would get a raise in the next year or two. Like, and I understand it's not in regards to this mayor's term or whatever the case may be, but we're still in the middle of a housing crisis. Yet here we sit speaking about whether our local government should get raises in 2022. It, it doesn't make any sense. And I, like I said the first time, it's distasteful and disrespectful for people to be wasting taxpayers' time and our time talking about more money for our local government. And we are struggling to stay in our homes. Yeah, that's all I had to say there.
Thank you. Are there any other comments from the public? Mr. Harris, may I have a call? Roll call, please.
Yes, Mr. Vice President. Mr. Royo.
Aye.
Ms. Bakay.
Aye.
Ms. Craig.
Aye.
Ms. Diaz.
Aye.
Mr. Garcia, Melina.
Aye.
And Mr. Seda.
Aye.
Mr. Vice President, if I may.
Yes, please.
So I have talked about this in the previous meetings as well. But for me, the reason that I voted for this to move forward is because what we're looking at is holistically at equity, particularly around wages. And so for me, what I'm really looking forward and the foresight really is, is that the next city mayor that we have, I would hope is a person of color. And so we're making the decision now to invest in those individuals. Because if we have a mayor of color that's coming on next up.
So you've already picked the next mayor.
Okay, hold on.
Excuse me, excuse me.
Can't do this. So if we are to champion behind a mayor that's a person of color, we would want them to be set up in making something that's equitable in terms of wages. If we don't vote for this now, that's not going to happen. Also, as a female mayor, her pay is not equitable. The people that are working under her, and in the future, should a female be working under, also are not making the same wages that they are within the directors. So if we're looking at this from the perspective of equity, shouldn't the mayor have a salary that is representative of the work that they're doing?
But how can you say that they're doing that work if you're, if you're actually giving them a raise before they actually even done it themselves? You're agreeing to say that every year I'm going to end up by giving this person a raise. You don't know what they're doing in this community. You're taking money out of the tax return dollars you're going to pay this mayor. And you don't even know what they're doing to the community, if they're going to even do anything at all. It doesn't make any sense.
So at this point, the mayor doesn't make a livable wage?
Excuse me. If you need to speak, you need to come to the podium. We've been past that point. Counselor is speaking. And he has the floor, please.
No, I genuinely want to engage in this conversation.
So the mayor doesn't make a livable wage?
No, so the mayor does make a livable wage. But also, what we're doing here is looking at, in comparison to other cities, are we being leaders in terms of equity in the work? And I hear your point about the fact that if in the future, we can't guarantee that this person's going to be doing work that's more than what we're asking at the moment. But what I'm saying is that in general, we are paying less than. So if we also want to attract mayors that want to do this work, we need to be paying at a rate that is equitable. And we are lower than other cities. Because the reason that we're lower than other cities is because a couple administrations ago, when it was Rick Gray, a white man that had plenty of money, he froze his salary. And so that's why we're behind. He could afford to freeze his salary. And so we're behind years with other cities in terms of what we're paying our mayors. So if also you're saying we're not attracting the right candidates, then this job is hard. And so we want the right candidates. We need to be able to pay them a salary that is equitable to the work that they're doing.
But as it stands right now, and I mean, it is what it is. The mayor's job is head of our police department.
Correct.
Our city has beaucoup issues when it comes to our police department. So if we're gauging on how we're going to what? Pay our next top cop more money? Like that just, it doesn't seem plausible to me. And I've met the person who ran against the mayor last year. That's a white male. I haven't seen any minorities actually step up to the plate that are even, that are even plausible for the position of mayor as of yet. I haven't seen any of this. And we're at next election almost. So it's like our next mayor is going to be Deneen Sarachi, and she's going to get a raise.
Correct. Well, it's going to be frozen.
While we're in this housing crisis, and it doesn't make sense to me. This could be a decision that got made later on. We, y'all chose the table at last time because there was so much attention to the area. But it's like now this just popped up again. And it's like, how did it go from being tabled at that meeting to being snuck in right now by this dude? It just doesn't make sense to us.
So it wasn't snuck in. And the reason that it has to happen now, and Patrick, you can correct me if I'm wrong, is that it needs to happen before the election or else it won't be able to apply to the next mayor.
Can you, can you give her like an explanation that it's going to fall under the Pennsylvania?
Sure. And I do just want to emphasize, this is the third meeting in a row where we've talked about this issue. So we did talk about it at the committee meeting at the beginning of the month. And we talked about it at the first meeting. The reason that this was put on the agenda for discussion for the July meetings is that if there is no ordinance that adopts a change to the salary for Office of the Mayor before August 17th of this year, then the salary for Office of the Mayor for the next four years will be frozen. City Council can't make a decision next year to change the salary for Office of the Mayor for '22, '23, or '24 if they don't do that before August of this year. So that's why it's on the agenda for this, for this year. And I just also want to reiterate that the salary for Office of the Mayor for 2022 will reflect no change. So it's no increase versus the salary in 2021. Any increase thereafter will happen as a result of changes in the Consumer Price Index.
So Patrick, just so everyone understands, if there, if, if the governor says there's another frozen year of salary, that means that 2023 can be frozen and no one's going to get a raise.
Yes, that's correct. So that's an action by the legislature and the governor together to do those freezes. That's right.
So that's why I can say that I, I did vote for that because I know that I don't see any foresee increases anytime soon in, in, in the state of Pennsylvania.
Yeah, that, what happens at the, at the state level is it takes action for them to not have that CPI increase to their salary. And that, and that would also impact here in the city of Lancaster.
Thank you, Mr. Hopkins.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. I just didn't want to move forward without giving an explanation to my.
I understand. Ma'am, we're already at the vote.
I can't make a comment?
You can make, I'm going to give you three minutes to make a comment. And then I'm holding it to there because we're at the vote margin now.
That's all right. My comment is, I would like to see a mayor who is reachable, who interacts with the inner city where the real problems are. I've been reaching to the mayor for two years. No response. I keep getting put off. Whatever happened to getting a mayor who truly cared about the citizens and the community they're in instead of the money in the bank? I'm sorry. I, I see people day in and day out struggling to pay rent and on the streets, knowing they're going to be evicted. And we have, and, and it's not disrespectful by any means, but we have a raise coming through when you have people laying on a gutter, sleeping, getting no help. And you have people truly trying to reach out and get help for them. And they're being threatened with arrest and with citations and everything else. So where's the balance? I mean, does the mayor, where's the mayor that truly, truly cares? And you know what? It's not about the paycheck. It's about doing what my community needs because I have a love of my community.
Excuse me. Can I just ask your name? Excuse me, ma'am. Could you please give your name? Because I want to follow up with you.
Absolutely. My name is Mickey. I also Michelle Yullery with Mickey's Mission of Hope.
I know who you are. Thank you very much. And I don't have any notification of request from you, Mickey, for a meeting. And so let's, let's please follow up about that. If you have not, if you've been speaking to my assistant or whatnot, but I, I don't have that.
I will actually give you my phone number on paper tonight before I leave because I have been reaching out to you. I am threatened with arrest and unfairly, so.
I'm very unaware of what you're speaking to, and we should definitely talk.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Harris.
Yes, Mr. Vice President.
Okay, we move on to Bill number, Administration Bill Number 16-2021, Chapter 95, the City Code Water Article Billing and Administration to Revised Water Shut-Off Notifications.
Motion to approve.
The title, Mr. Vice President. In ordinance of the City Council of the City of Lancaster, amending Chapter 295 of the Code of the City of Lancaster, Water, Article, Article 6, Billing and Administration, Sections 295, 44, Notice from Customer, and 295, 49, Shutting Off Service, to provide notification from the customer to the utility at the Office of the Bureau of Water and to provide for water shut-offs to be performed in conformity with the City of Lancaster's Water Utility Tariff and Pennsylvania Public Utility Commission Regulations, Providing for the repeal of inconsistent ordinances, Providing for the separability of the ordinance, and Providing that the ordinance shall take effect in accordance with Pennsylvania law. The title.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Royo.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. Nothing much more to add to this. I don't know, Mr. Hopkins, you want to add any details to the title?
Well, similar to the last issue, I think maybe a little bit of a summer here would be helpful. So the short story with this ordinance is that what we're doing is matching up the water service, the notifications that are required to go to customers if they are at risk of having service termination for non-payment for their water sewer, stormwater bills. And we're matching that up with what the Public Utility Commission requires to be the notifications to customers outside of the city. For the city water system, the Public Utility Commission sets the rules and regulations for notifications and rates and other things for customers outside of the city of Lancaster. Inside of the city of Lancaster, the Public Utility Commission rules don't apply. And those rules are adopted through ordinances approved by City Council. The, as we were going through a number of different reviews of programs and procedures, really to put in place the Emergency Rental Assistance Program funding as an opportunity for our, for city customers. And also, as we were looking at reviewing just our, our overall process because of the Utility Assistance Program that we adopted, funding that we adopted in both the water and sewer budgets, actually beginning in 2020. We took a look at the procedures that we had in place, or actually, the code that we had in place for inside-city customers. And frankly, that code was outdated and didn't match even what our process was for inside-city customers. Rather than have one code changed now and the Public Utility Commission might make a change later on down the road, the way to equitatively do this is to match up, way to equitably do this is to match up- have the city code simply state that whatever notification requirements are there for notifications to customers outside of the city, those exact same notifications and policies and procedures ought to be in place for customers inside the city so that there's equal protection for customers across the entire service system. This is also a good opportunity for just another pitch for the emergency rental- or emergency, yeah, rental and utility assistance program. L-HOP, CAP, and a number of other organizations throughout Lancaster County have been working with residents, both city residents and also residents outside the city, to try to get them into the ERAP program for rental assistance, but also for utility assistance. Unfortunately, that program is sort of hamstrung by the rules and regulations that are set by HUD. But those organizations are continuing to help people. We have still seen very few folks come through that program and have their city water and sewer bills paid by that funding. There's $34 million of funding available, and only about $2.5 million of that has actually been allocated to city and county residents to pay their utility bills and to help pay their back rent or mortgage payments. So, we really want to encourage folks to take advantage of that program. The dollars are there, and the assistance is there to work through the program. But again, this ordinance simply creates that equity between the process inside the city and outside of the city.
Patrick, is there an expiration date or a deadline to be met through that process?
Well, there's not- there's not a deadline for the adoption of this ordinance, except that we are going through, you know, reviewing that entire process. There will come a time where it will make sense for us to restart. We've had a moratorium on service terminations since March of 2020. We've built up a- there's past due delinquencies is somewhere around 1.3 or 1.4 million dollars. That was in the presentation that I gave to council earlier this month. We, again, want to encourage people to go through the ERAP program. We do not want to do service terminations. We have the ERAP program. We have the utility assistance program funding that we partnered with CAP on. And at the same time, we have to have a structured process in place when we get to the point where service termination for collection becomes a reality.
Any questions from council? Do we have any questions from the public returning only to this matter?
Yes.
Please come up to the podium, give your name, and your-
Tammy Rojas, West Fine Street. So, with this new ordinance, what I'd like to know is, do you have a rough estimate, with or without this ordinance actually, on how many people could be facing water shut-offs? Like, do you have that number? Like, I feel like this is for a reason, and you're talking about, oh, there's money out there, whatnot, so I feel like you must know or have a rough idea that people are, if they don't utilize this funding or whatever, could be facing a water shut-off. Like, that's what I'm worried about. I don't want to see anybody lose their water. And if there are people that, you know, or could be potential losing their water, I mean, like, are we enacting the neighborhood office engagement to knock on doors to, like, help people through? Because let me tell you, as somebody who's poor and dispossessed and has lived in this community, I'm 44-years-old, and I've lived in this community, like, all my life. This system is not set up for us to actually even know about, let alone try to file for any of this help. That rental assistance stuff was, like, over my head. Like, it was absolutely ridiculous. So, without literally, like, step-by-step helping these people through the process, it's not as easy as you may think. And I'm a little bit worried now, and I'd like to have a rough idea of what number of people could be facing potential water shut-offs.
So, I can- I think we can answer part of that, but I want to back up. This ordinance is actually protecting people in a way that the previous ordinance did not, because it sets up a longer process and more touch points with that potential rate payer so that they have opportunities to remedy the problem using the different tools that we have even before all of the additional federal monies that came in. So, the city has a water shut-off program because we also are working to prevent shut-offs, because when a water shut-off happens, and I think you probably know this, an eviction also follows.
Yeah, I know, because we came here to city council back at, like, Christmas of 2019 when y'all were shutting off people's water because they didn't upgrade the water meters. So, I'm a little bit stressed right now, worried about people losing their waters.
That's a different- that's a different matter, because that doesn't have to do with non-payment. And we also cannot shut off water during several, like, six months of the year. So, we have had a moratorium on shut-offs. What we are trying to do is to create a process that is equitable, because actually, before this ordinance was introduced, what we realized as we were reviewing is that there were fewer opportunities to notify or fewer required opportunities to notify city residents than suburban residents. So, we're actually treating our out-of-city customers better than in-city customers. So, this is why we are making this change. We have to adopt the- we don't- we want to align the system so that we are creating as many changes as possible. This does not mean- this ordinance, let me just assure you, does not mean that we are running out the door tomorrow or when this is passed, if it is passed, to make shut-offs happen. What we are doing is to create a better and longer process, so there's more notifications. So, if you miss the first letter, you get a second letter. If you miss the second letter, you get a third letter. If you miss that letter, then there's a door knock. If you miss that, there's another door tag. I'm summarizing, but that's basically what this process is. In addition, the Emergency Rental Assistance, Utility Assistance Program, I just want to underscore for everybody to please visit lancasterhelp.rent or call 5903101, or you can visit a physical location to help walk through the paperwork that's required so that they can help. There's bilingual staff that are available. You can go to Brightside, Price Elementary, SoWe, CAP, and there are several other locations throughout the city to get this assistance. And we're urging people, if you are behind in rent, if you are behind in any of your utility payments, this program is set up for you, and there are literally millions of dollars to help. We want to help you access that. We've also sent out postcards to every single person that pays water, sewer, or wastewater, because this is countywide, with this information that's been included separately as a postcard. And we're continuing to push out this information. And as much as you can help us do that, I would appreciate it.
Yeah, I don't have an issue with definitely, like, spreading the word and help that's given, but I would think that, once again, water is a human right, so I would do whatever is needed to make sure that not one single person got their water shut off, even if they couldn't pay. Because as you can see by the papers we have put on your- in front of all of you and have handed out here, 48.1% of this community is struggling. Guess what? That number of people make less than $27,000 a year. So, it's kind of a slap in the face that y'all just got a raise and whatnot, when, you know, folks like me got shoes that talk to you. So, just think about that. And water's a human right. Don't shut off anybody's water.
Good job.
It would be next.
My question is-
Your name, please?
Mickey. I'm sorry. What do I need to tell you? Lancaster, exactly.
Yeah, just your street number, your-
Oh, North Marshall.
Okay.
North Marshall. My question is, when you have electric and the electric gets shut off, if you have a medical condition, like, somebody that needs the electric to survive, I know you can go through a process to keep that. Is there any investigation done as far as water before you shut it off as to what- I mean, we all need water, but like, if you have a nebulizer, you're going to need water. If you have oxygen, you're going to need water. So, is there any investigation done into that as part one? And part two is with the rental assistance that you're talking about. I have worked with the homeless for months with this. We're not getting responses. Everybody's pending, and we can't get answers. So, of course, I sent them- it was Clipper the other week in different locations, but they're still not getting answers. The deadline is approaching. And we have how many people that are going to have no income? And it's not that they don't want to work or can't work, or that there's not work. They can't work. I'm 100% disabled, but I'm still doing what I can. But as far as the water, what do you have in place to ensure that a family that needs water to survive isn't going to get their water shut off and then condemnation or eviction?
Mr. Hopkins?
Oh, how you doing?
Yes, so, the answer for the first part of that about medical-related issues. So, that's actually part of the language that's required in the notification that goes to both landlords and tenants in the case of rental properties and homeowners, in the case of homeowner-occupied properties. There are requirements in the PUC code for medical issues so that if water is terminated- water would be serviced- water service would be terminated at a property, and that is going to impact some of the medical issues that you talked about, that there are extensions to that service termination that can occur for an ongoing basis and based on, you know, so Treasury- folks in Treasury Office are used to working through that process with customers. They've done it, you know, year after year. The- and that language is actually required to be in the notification. So, and those notifications are also required to be bilingual. So, there's English and Spanish language, and also the folks in Treasury Office are actively using the Proprio Service in case there are folks who are- don't have English language or Spanish language functionality.
Patrick, I have a question, if I may.
Please.
In relations to people that are disabled, working with possibly Lancaster- working possibly with the, like, medical group like Lancaster General, or maybe the Southeast or some other community, and obviously there is PHI issues, but do you have any kind of relationship where we know that if that's going to occur, that we know that that patient, you know, is on oxygen and, you know, that nothing happens, that we're going to wind up with a lawsuit?
So, the Utility Commission has a process spelled out as to how those issues are handled. And even though, again, like, the PUC jurisdiction- PUC doesn't have jurisdiction inside of the city, we use the same process for the medical certifications for customers, whether they live inside the city or they're suburban customers. So, we use that PUC process because it's a structured process to determine, again, like you said, we're not getting direct medical information about an individual in the household, but we're getting information about why water service is necessary to serve their medical condition.
Thank you, Patrick.
Please. She's up first.
Oh, sorry. My bad, my bad.
Jessica Lopez, 437 East Marion Street. My question is mainly directed for, in regards to the ERAP program. Like, they said they're backed up. So, with the influx now for this water situation, or whatever the case may be, being directed at that program, how does the city plan to assist them to get these applications processed? There's already, I thought they said, like, 2,000 back applications that haven't been processed yet. And it's like, these people are- the bills are building every month. Every month that the program keeps running, it's been open since, what, March? And if 2,000 applications haven't been processed since March, and it's no fault of the workers, because they were up at Clipper Stadium working hard, they're doing their best. But there's clearly not enough of them. So, it's like, how do you rectify that problem before you add another problem to that program? Because it's crazy. You literally go on there, they're not telling anybody anything. If people are missing documents, they're not informing them as to what. They'll just send generic notifications. Nobody's understanding exactly what's going on with their individual cases while their landlords are like, hey, we want our money, whether this program's going to pay you or not. So, before we add to that already issue, how are we going to assist them?
And so, if I could just weigh in for a minute, thank you for your question. And I think that the source of frustration is real, and we're experiencing it too, because we are trying to get our residents, our city residents, to apply for the program and to get the assistance so that our residents are able to take advantage of these resources that are so desperately needed right now. And there is this pot of money that is quite substantial, and we want to make sure that the highest need residents have access to that. So, we've been in regular conversations with Justin Eby, who's the executive director of the Lancaster County Housing Authority, who's running this program. And these concerns have been brought to Mr. Eby. They've also been brought to the county commissioners. And I believe that what it's going to take in order to address the problems are changes from the federal government to the states and local providers of these funds to change the regulations and also to improve the programmatic rollout. So, what we've heard is that what we're being- what everybody is being asked for is- are all requirements from the federal government, and the way that those requirements are rolling out are dictated from the federal level. What I still am not clear about is how, like, some of the concerns that you are raising about not knowing which form that you need to complete, et cetera. And the staffing capacity is an issue. And so, I know that the event at Clipper Stadium was organized to be able to provide better and more opportunities for people to come to that. And I'm hoping that those kinds of events can continue to happen, because that was organized rather quickly in order to try to address some of the questions, issues that people were having with their applications. So, this is just to say, we have to keep working on it, but there's no way. It's like the lottery. You can't win unless you play. You have to submit an application. You have to go through this process in order to be able to get the rental assistance and utility assistance that families in Lancaster City need. And so, we are continuing to support education and information because we, quite frankly, are disappointed with the number of applications that they have received thus far.
Is there something, though, that that supplement or maybe that in between the process?
So, let's say you're at the last leg of this process. You've been at Clipper Stadium, you've sat down with the people, and your application's still not processed. So, is there something that's going to fall in between so you don't get evicted in the process?
So, that's the eviction moratorium. That's the eviction moratorium, which is still in place, as well as the water shut-off moratorium.
Even with the eviction moratorium, there was still how many 30-day notices to get out?
Yeah. So, this is- this is the challenge, Jessica. And I appreciate that you are elevating it, because it is hugely frustrating, the bureaucracy that- between keeping people in their homes and actually getting the relief that is available there. And so, there is a reporter that's sitting in the back row, I'm calling you out, Carter, sorry, who has been covering these issues and, you know, is, I'm hoping, going to continue to cover this issue, because it is so important for families in the city and across the county to be able to actually access these funds. And this is no consolation, we are not alone. This is happening across the country, because the way that this program was set up and the requirements are in discord with the need and the ability to be able to access these funds. And so, you know, there's a part of me that says, this isn't by accident, right? And yet, there's also a part of me that's like, we have to keep driving, because we need more people to fill out those applications, because we know that there's more need. And to continue to push, push, push to get more folks to apply. So, we can tell you that very few people have actually applied to the city, and we have a fund to support utility payments, even though we are continuing to talk about this in pretty much every place that we're going.
So, this city fund is-
Available, outside of this.
Yes, so-
Go ahead, Patrick.
So, the utility assistance program that was established in 2020 was funded with $50,000, which compared to $34 million is a drop in the bucket, but that was a start. We funded it again with another $50,000 in 2021, and the partnership was between the city and Community Action Partnership. So, because they have a program already set up to handle the same type of thing with PPL and UGI. And so, the program that we established was basically the same as they run for PPL and UGI, which is that customers get referred from city treasury if they have a delinquent bill that might lead them to shut off. They get referred to CAP, and then CAP, that's sort of the handoff to CAP, and then you work through the- I'm blanking on the name now, the Navigator Program. So, and the idea there is not- the most important thing at that moment is to make sure that somebody's water doesn't get terminated, and the funding assistance is there to help them with their delinquent water bill. At the same time, that Navigator Program is to also help them with a number of other issues that they might have going on with family budgets and financing and things like that. So, that program is in place. We've, to a certain extent, had a bit of a hold on it, because the ERAP funding came around, and that seemed like the best vehicle to point towards- folks toward, that's clearly not working the way that we would have intended it to work. That's- the other thing I want to say here is that this ordinance is on city council agenda now, not because we are rushing toward a shut-off program. That is exactly what we're trying to avoid. At the same time, we have to set up a process in place that creates that equity, so we don't have this old city code, which right now says that if you have a delinquent water bill, that's 30 days past due, we have to give you five days' notice, and then we can shut off your water. That's not the process we've been using, but right now, that's what city law says. And what we're trying to do is change the city law to say that we have to comply with the Public Utility Commission's notice process, which is like a five-step notification process.
I'll be short right now. Curtis Yancey, Willow Street. Just real quick, do we know the number of people that are currently delinquent?
So, I don't have that number off the top of my head. At the committee meeting at the beginning of this month, I made a presentation that covered the dollar amounts that were delinquent. The dollar amount inside the city was somewhere around $935,000, and the delinquent amount outside of the city, so suburban customers, was somewhere around $350,000. I can get those numbers together for city council, the actual number of accounts that are delinquent, and sort of which phase of delinquency they're in. What I had showed you all at the beginning of the month was those who were 30 days to 60 days past due, 60 to 90, 90 to 120, and then more than 120. So, I can get those numbers together so that you have a sense of not just the dollar amount, but the scope of the number of individual customers we're talking about.
Thank you, Patrick. And I would ask Ms. Rojas to communicate with Mr. Harris for those numbers to be shared with you, please. Thank you, Bernie.
One more question. So, maybe the last time that the type of funding happened, when the funds aren't used, I know we didn't use a bunch of it. When the funds weren't used throughout the state, it ended up getting funded to the- no, not to the city, it went to the corrections department. So, my question is, if the funds don't get used, do we know where the money's going to go?
Right now, the deadline for applications is September 30th of 2022. So, that doesn't expire during 2021. It's through September 30th of next year.
Any other questions from the public? Mr. Harris?
Mr. Royo?
Aye.
Ms. Bacon?
Aye.
Ms. Craig?
Aye.
Ms. Diaz?
Aye.
Mr. Garcia-Molina?
Aye.
And Mr. Seda?
Aye. That brings us to the last item on the agenda for legislative, Administration Bill Number 17, Rescinding COVID-19 Construction Regulations, containing Ordinance Number 012020. Mr. Harris?
Yes, Mr. Vice President. In ordinance of the City Council of the City of Lancaster, terminating ordinance number one- one, 2020, adopted by council May 12, 2020, providing for the repeal of inconsistent ordinances, providing for the separability of the ordinance, and providing that the ordinance shall take effect in accordance with Pennsylvania law.
Motion to approve?
Second.
There's nothing much more than I need to add to the title, but Mr. Campbell, if there's anything that you want to add to that?
Sure, thank you very much, council. As presented a couple of times before at committee and at council before, this legislation had gone into effect back in May of 2020. If we want to go back to that not very happy time, in April of that year, there had been a state of emergency declared by the state of Pennsylvania, which brought everything, including construction and all services, to a halt. What we wanted and needed to be able to do was to allow construction to be able to continue, businesses to be able to operate, and for the city and legislative services to be able to continue, which included inspection of construction as it was going on, the ability for documents to be reviewed and seen by professionals, et cetera. Going to those construction sites in May and June of 2020 was deemed a very dangerous situation unless and until we had ways of protecting the people who were going to those construction sites, both from the private sector, the contractors, and our staff, the inspectors. Happily, the COVID has run most of its course, even though we're having some spikes going right now. But the state of emergency declared by the state of Pennsylvania has been ceased, has ceased a number of months ago, and we are quite satisfied that conventional construction methods and services such as OSHA regulation, other safeguards, et cetera, are more than sufficient to safeguard the construction population and the people who have to serve from the city to make sure the construction continues. And so we are asking for the removal of this particular ordinance, it is no longer necessary.
Thank you, Mr. Campbell. Do we have any questions from the council?
If I may, Mr. Vice President?
Yes, please.
And just for clarification, if the state were to, or I guess if you can explain, what would be the circumstances that we would reenact an ordinance like this again?
It would probably, that's a very good question, it would probably be another state of emergency and we would probably put in place this very same ordinance. It had the types of regulations of how do you go to the site, how many people would share a car, how many people could, how far away from each other did you need to be, under what circumstances could a construction site be shut down, et cetera. So if we do go into, excuse me, if we do go into a state of emergency again, the very same types of things would go back into effect. We would have to come before council again, but we would ask and reinstitute the same regulation.
Thank you, Ms. Campbell.
Do we have any questions from the public? Thank you, Mr. Campbell.
Thank you.
Mr. Harris?
Mr. Roya?
Aye.
Ms. Beckett?
Aye.
Ms. Craig?
Aye.
Ms. Diaz?
Aye.
Mr. Garcia-Molina?
Aye.
And Mr. Seda?
Aye.
That brings us to the next item on the agenda, which is the second public comment. Again, you have three minutes to speak on whatever subject you want. Do we have anyone to speak? Ms. Rojas? Again, state your name, your location, and you have three minutes, please.
Rojas, West Vine Street. I'm a coordinator with Put People First PA and I'm on the executive board of the National Union of the Homeless, and we're a part of the Poor Peoples Campaign, a national call for more revival. I'm 44 years old, I'm a Medicaid recipient, and Lancaster is the only home I have ever really known. Tonight is the final time I will speak at a Lancaster City Council meeting as a Lancaster city resident. I am one of many from our community being displaced due to poverty and the rapid gentrification swooping through our community. I contracted COVID-19 at the end of January. My Penn Medicine Primary Care Physician's Office gave me the runaround about getting a COVID-19 test, so I had to get a test through other means. There was a moment, while extremely sick, where I was convinced I wouldn't make it, but I did, and my heart aches for those who didn't. I'm still dealing with lingering effects since contracting the virus. My lung capacity has changed and I still have moments of extreme fatigue and COVID fog brain. Penn Medicine has refused to send me to a specialist. They just keep telling me to wait and see. The only thing they have done for me is prescribed me an inhaler. During the pandemic, all levels of government across the United States, including this administration and council, allowed these healthcare profiteers to make decisions on how to handle the pandemic, gave them epic amounts of public money, permitted them to co-write legislation making them tens of millions of profits, closed hospitals, or rezone away healthcare infrastructure to build luxury housing. All of this has led to the healthcare profiteers making record profits, and yet the people have suffered. Many have paid with their lives and many more are continuing to suffer and struggle to survive. Healthcare and housing are very interconnected issues, they are basic necessities, thus are human rights. Yet we live our lives under a system that dictates they are commodities to be consumed and make a profit from. If we continue to operate our lives under this system, many will continue to suffer, or worse, die, who otherwise could have been saved, and many more will find themselves living on the streets. We are here tonight, once again, to demand fighting poverty be a primary focus and stop allowing these profiteers to get rich off our pain and suffering. The working class is losing what we have built and produced. We had St. Joseph Hospital in Conestoga View stolen from us because our local government handed them over to healthcare profiteers and it cost our community dearly. You didn't hear our warning and our community is paying the price. So our question to you all is, just how many more need to suffer for you to take a stand, listen to the poor, and change the path and the direction we are heading?
Thank you, Ms. Rojas. Do we have any other public comment? Please come up to the podium. You went first, I'm going to let you go now, please.
My name is Matthew Rosing, I live on the 200 block of West Vine Street. I'm with Put People First PA and the National Union of the Homeless. I've been a resident of Lancaster since 2013, and in that time, I've seen this city change, not for the better. I've been homeless in this community, experienced firsthand the faults in the system with services for those living on the streets. I was an inmate in Lancaster County prison and sat for 14 and a half months because I was denied bail because I was homeless. Later, I was found not guilty and released, so basically I sat for 14 and a half months because I was homeless. The city's heart is dying. The city administration has bent over backwards for corporations, done the will of the rich, has forgotten how the working class of this city is what made this place home. Closed hospitals, bailed-out hotels, built high-rises like Willow Valley Mosaic that will benefit the economically comfortable and profits from development will go to the rich. You continue to do things to hurt the poor and dispossessed in this city. I myself now must leave this city due to the fact that I simply can't afford to live here anymore. I feel abandoned and pushed out by this administration. Many others in our community, including some of our members, are facing evictions because their landlords are selling their properties and the tenants are being forced to move and there's no housing available for us, the poor. During this last year, we had a real chance to show what this city is made of. You could have rallied all hands on deck to see through this pandemic, but instead you passed the buck to the county, to the state, to the federal, saying over and over, your hands are tied, and took your guidance from ruling class, from people like Michael Bloomberg. The fact that your hands are tied is simply not true. You yourself stated, the first city council meeting we attended, December 2018, that your power around the St. Joseph Hospital property and zoning, and we shouldn't rule you out yet, but look at how that turned out. You could have stood with the poor and dispossessed, instead you sold out. We were never in this together. You can create artwork all you want with that phrase and put it everywhere, you just sold us out, that's the reality of it.
Jessica Lopez, 437 East Marion. I want to speak in regard to what Mickey was talking about earlier. I know that myself, I have met with the mayor and spoke to you about trying to find a way to get Mickey a safe kitchen, a safe-serve kitchen, trying to find a way that the city can actually work with her and Mickey's Mission of Hope because she does do good work. She's down Ben's Park cleaning Ben's Park, it's not our public service workers, the same way Hoops for Hopes is over at Price cleaning their park, it's not our public service workers that are actually doing the jobs. Mickey's in there trying not to step on feces and feed people. You got the parking garage looking like a porta potty because we pulled out the porta potties. And it's like, it's like, we can pretend like the homeless aren't there, but they are, and somebody has to feed them, I'm sorry, we're broke, and the mayor, sorry, no offense, you're getting a raise. So now what, we're going to take more tax dollars, money to feed the homeless when we have people who are willing to do it? While we incarcerate her for trying to feed the homeless? I shouldn't be getting late-night phone calls because she's scared that she's going to go to jail because she went down and tried to give somebody a sandwich. And it's not, it's not like city council doesn't know of this issue, I've met with Izzy a few times about it. And it's like, we all made our presence be known that we would be here. Like, this shouldn't be happening to people. People shouldn't go out trying to make changes in their cities and end up in jail. Because at the end of the day, there's not going to be anybody left to do it. I went out, tried to make some changes, I went to jail, and then everybody looked at me and said my hands are tied, the same way they looked at him and said their hands are tied when it comes to his situation too. And it's like, how, how? So after Mickey goes to jail and nobody's down there to clean up Ben's Park and feed the homeless, is everybody's hands going to be tied still? Because I'm, I'm poor, I can't bail her out, like, I'm already stuck in my own conditions. And it's like, how do we stop discouraging people from being productive citizens and being a part of their community in which they're supposed to? There's no book nowhere where you read it and it'd be like, the lady that feeds the homeless went to jail. Like, these small-town communities that we're trying to pretend to be, this is heartfelt Lancaster, but we're locking up the people who filled the homeless and we'd rather put her in prison than give her a serve-safe kitchen. It just doesn't make sense to me and it's not something that the council is unaware of. It's a problem that could be easily rectified and everybody would be happy and then the last however many minutes of your meeting that got disrupted wouldn't happen like that because this lady would have been cooking somewhere. That's all I got for that, and I will say, I do appreciate Mickey, she's a blessing to Unapologetic. Our Christmas gift back, we touched 56 kids and nobody had to put in an application, we reached out to the mothers. Like, we gave out 86 hot meals from my living room because Mickey made it possible. Like, we've done a lot through the assistance of this lady, it don't got nothing to do with me. And it's like, how can you threaten to put her in jail, in our prison? The way our county set up, we just had two deaths on the female block in the last two months. The commissioners are taking way too long with building that new jail. Like, it's sad and they're going to threaten to put her in there. So what happens when you put her in that 104-degree box? So now, she dies because she tried to feed the homeless? Like, Lancaster City, like, really needs to change their focus. We have pedophiles getting off on probation, but we're worried about locking up the lady that feeds the homeless, there's an issue to me.
Good evening. My name is Dennis Garrett, I'm residing at the TLC, and I've been homeless, living on the streets, and luckily, I've been thankful to be a veteran to avail myself, but I see a lot of people out there that are really hurting and they've been literally being threatened to be taken off the streets because, because they, some of the people don't clean up after themselves. Now, honestly, I always cleaned up there for myself and the sergeant of the sheriffs, he used to be my boss at Kunsler, so we got along good, and I never got evicted being over there. But a lot of other people who were staying there were being evicted because they have a drug problem. Now, my contention is, we're bringing in all these illegal immigrants into our country and they're being shipped all over the country and no one knows where they're going, and you're putting pressure on our infrastructure of our, how you're going to take care of the homeless, and yet, you don't take care of the people that we have now. Now, I've always been taught, being a Christian, you always take care of your own before you reach out to help other people. It's all fine and dandy that we're trying to help these people, but I think communities need to stand up against this government by allowing all these illegal immigrants that are coming in here, they're not being tested for COVID, and yet, we're going to get ready for now for the Delta strain, where they're going to lock us up again and sequester us in, heaven forbid, in our homes again, for those who have homes. And it's like, to me, it's a joke, you know? I mean, what can you do as a city council, as a small community, reach out to the representatives in Congress and get them to hold our government accountable for stopping this madness that President Trump had under control? I mean, people may not like Trump, but he had it under control, and this is all by design that they're allowing all these illegal immigrants to turn these purple states into blue states for future elections to control us. And if people don't see that, then heaven help me. I'm 68 years old, I lived a lifetime, I'm a veteran, I served in the armed forces and I see what it was like back in my age. I just hope that people have the same opportunities as I had, but I don't see it happening now with this government being taken over by radical Marxists and, what else you want to call them, communists? This is where our government's heading, heaven help us all.
I'm going to ask that we all stay civil as much as we can, we may disagree to disagree. Thank you.
Good evening. I guess by now, y'all know my name is Michelle Yuley, North Marshall Street, and yes, I run and operate Mickey's Mission of Hope. But to the homeless community, I am not known as that. To the homeless community, I am mom, I am the light at the end of the tunnel, and I am the person they called during the middle of the night when they've been abused, when they've been raped, when they've been threatened. I'm the one that goes down there and takes care of it because they don't feel comfortable asking our police department to do it. I've been feeding at Ben's Park for years, I have not had many issues. I feel safer in Ben's Park with my family. I feel safer in Ben's Park with my family than I do walking many of the streets in Lancaster. I am now being threatened with arrest, with $1,600 fines per every meal that I take in, and as a record of fact, I take 80 meals a night minimum to Ben's Park. I not only feed Ben's Park, I take care of our less fortunate community. If somebody needs groceries, I get them the groceries. If they need clothing, they get clothing, whatever they need, we get that for them. Two weeks ago, this Saturday, your officers walked into Ben's Park. I was away with my family. They went after my three workers I had there asking for me. Went and asked, what do you want her for? She's gonna be arrested. What's she gonna be arrested for? For feeding the homeless. I'm sorry, if I have a right to eat, anybody around me has that right to eat, and yes, I'm shaking because I'm angry, not because I'm scared right now. My three workers were told that I knew I was gonna be arrested that night and was throwing them under the bus, which they knew better had. I was in Ben's Park the following day, not dressed like this. I watched other groups walk into that park and hand out a little bit of this, a little bit of that. Nobody was questioned. It's the same night after night after night. Your officers come in, go up to the people and say, oh, food, here's an example of tonight. Am I correct?
Yes.
Went up to them and said, oh, somebody brought you food. Who brought that food? The person said, oh, a church brought it. Oh, okay, what church? Oh, I don't know, some men in a church. Well, what was the lady's name? Oh, it wasn't a lady, it was a mean looking man. Okay, good. Walked away. Your officers are coming into the park to find out if I'm the one in there bringing food, and then if it's not me, oh, thank you for your care and compassion, and they carry on. Why am I being targeted for loving on my homeless family? And yes, I call them my family, I don't call them those people. They are not those people to me. This is my family, and I will stand and defend that. I have reached out to the mayor last year when four of your officers surrounded me in Muscles Park threatening me, one of them in particular, yes, his name is Chad Binnerup, came in and surrounded me at a table and told me I had to talk to this woman, who was Kim Whistler. And I said, I'm not talking to you around them. We tried to walk away, they tried to follow us. I said, I'm not doing this. I did nothing wrong, and I'll stop in a minute. I'm sorry. I did nothing wrong. And Kim and I tried to work out a deal, you know, I was gonna do this, she was gonna get back to me with that. I've reached out to your office, I've reached out to Jen, I have reached out to every organization out there. The night I got threatened with arrest, I called Izzy. That's who I called, I called Izzy. Because I'm not doing anything wrong, and if you really wanna put me in jail for feeding, shame on everyone of yous. I'm going to continue to feed my community. I'm not gonna stop what I do because I need a piece of paper. There are people who are getting clothing, they're getting sheltered. Yes, we get them in shelter. Do you know in one weekend, I got six people into rehab. Now, you show me one of your paid employees that did that. I did. I got a phone call saying, this person wants to go in. I went down, I did it. They went in. And then I had them trickle down the line getting them in. Are they all success stories? Absolutely not. Get to know the people, get to know why they're doing the drugs. When you're abused and you're spit upon and you're called those people, and you're discriminated against because you don't have a place to call home. I understand why they get high, I truly do. Do I agree with the K2 in there? Absolutely not. But if that's what they have to do to kill the pain because the city they're supposed to love and respect doesn't have their back and doesn't take them, doesn't take care of them. But y'all wanna send officers in, even tonight, and I have a boatload of witnesses, soon as I started walking around with a bag of candy, officers come up and, come up and follow me. And I say, okay, what are you gonna do? Write me a citation for sharing a piece of candy? I'm told I can't take a bottle of water in there? Who else do you know that takes 80 bottles of water in there a day? Not once, but twice, on ice, takes meals in? And Dennis, I'm not trying to pull you out, but I take down good meals into that park. I don't just take peanut butter and jelly. If it's good enough for me to eat, it's good enough for my family to eat. And I'm tired of being threatened. I'm tired of getting the runaround. For two weeks, I've been on the phone trying to get answers, trying to get help. I'm not getting it, you know? And I'm getting, well, you gotta pay this much for this, and this for this, and this for that, close to $6,000 for me to do what I love. Last Friday, Columbia Presbyterian Church walked into Ben's Park with 30 pizzas, 12 watermelons, and a ton of water, a boombox and a microphone. Not one person questioned them or came near them, and they cleaned the park just like we do. She got on her microphone and she said, my name is Laurie Fleck, I'm with Columbia Presbyterian Church, and I'm a friend of Mickey from Mickey's Mission of Hope. And if y'all wanna F with somebody, I won't say it in front of y'all. Come do it to me. Not one of your men in blue then walked up to them, but when I came in the park later on with a 64-year-old, 64-year-old woman, they wanna come after us. Did you bring this in here? So tell me, why am I the only one targeted when there's all these other people walking in that park handing out food? I've seen a male lady take pizzas into that park and there's no issue.
Why are you being targeted at all?
Thank you.
Yeah, so what am I doing?
I don't wanna cut you off, but we've gone beyond the three limit.
That's okay.
Time now. I understand your feelings, and I know it's a hard case, but like I said, I need to cut you off.
So Mickey, I would like to talk with you, and I think if you have a few minutes tonight, I would like to talk through this. I know that Kim has been working with you to find a solution.
No, Kim wrote me off.
Okay.
Kim told me, call your office.
Okay, and I don't know that you, if you have, let's just talk tonight and figure this out. I also wanna just, I feel compelled to address two, two things. One is to say, I just need to say that the Department of Public Works staff that cleans the park in the morning and the afternoon.
That I feed.
Excuse me?
Sorry.
I'm just saying that those individuals care very much about keeping the park clean. They too clean up all kinds of stuff, including human feces and all the rest. And I know it is their job, but they do their job, and I just feel that for Miguel in particular and others who work very hard, I just wanna acknowledge their effort, and I don't, and I wanna just say that. The other thing that I wanna say, in specific to the issues related to food distribution in Ben's Park, is that I wanted to learn from you what is missing, because there are meals, and is it the quality of the meals? Is it where the meals are? I mean, the church, like, Anchorage breakfast, all of that. I wanna hear from you what you're hearing from individuals who are at Ben's Park. So if we can talk further, I would, I would appreciate that.
That's fine, and I'm on an ending note. I am in Ben's Park a minimum of two days a week with brooms, shovels, trash bags, and gloves, on my hands and knees. I'm the one jumping in those bushes pulling that out. The homeless are up with me doing it. You wanna complain about the feces in the garage, put the porta potties back, because honestly, they're not the ones who ruined the porta potties. It was your people off the streets coming in harassing our Ben's family.
Right, and that's also part of the challenge, is that we've had many different groups of people who are congregating in Ben's Park, who are also disrupting people who have, who have been, who have been staying in Ben's Park. And so, it has, this is an ongoing issue. We are very challenged, and I'd be like, I'd like to hear more from your perspective.
Last thing. Jessica, 437 East Marion Street. I was recently employed at Catalina's on Orange, and I've been working there since the day we opened. Now, mind you, I've been working at a lot of bars and restaurants in Lancaster City since I was about 16. So, and my mom worked at bars and restaurants beforehand. My question is, why can't a minority hold a liquor license in this city without being shut down within four years? It doesn't matter what bar and restaurant it is, or where it's at, from Caribbean Breeze, 'cause I was there the day we got shut down, and they did, they've never done in a white establishment, they locked the front door, they locked the back door, they carted everybody in there, and then finally Larry Solheavy, that he couldn't pay it. So then we had this situation that just broke out at Catalina's, and my thing is, three days later, four people were shot, and it didn't happen at Catalina's. So my question is, how are we faulting this business owner for our city's crime issues? That man, that man, Wayne Pagan, like, and his brothers, like, they managed to build up their own business, family generational wealth, have the money to rent a space downtown, purchase a liquor license downtown, and then got robbed because the people in this city couldn't behave. How is that their fault? And that's what worries me, because two people got thrown off the roof of Tellis, somebody got killed outside the village, somebody was murdered in O'Halloran's, people be killed in our bars all over this city, and they never lost their liquor licenses, so how did I lose my job? And that's a real question I have for yous guys, because it bothers me that I've watched so many bars and restaurants get shut down. My's, Caribbean Breeze, Vicki's, The Starting Gate, Manor, Gusto's, now Catalina's, and how many others that I don't know of. Like, they, these aren't, these rich, white, Greek-owned establishments, but yet, they have these problems too. Some lady just left Tellis and banged into a bunch of cars and was like, oh, I just had one drink. But they're not getting shut down, even after they had two people thrown off their rooftops. But yet, four people get shot outside of Catalina's, and the next week, we gotta sell our liquor license.
So just to clarify, just a couple of things about this, Jessica, two, two things. One, this is a decision by the Pennsylvania Liquor Control Board, and there's not a one of us that can, that speaks to that. Two, the hearing that was had that said that they needed to sell their license by July 14th happened the week before the shooting. So that hearing was had prior to the shooting that happened.
That's crazy, but it's still like, why? Why?
And this is what I will say, if you want to read the proceedings of the Pennsylvania Liquor Control Board, you have to go there, because...
And then how do we as a community fight that? Because this isn't the first time, so the PLCB is targeting our minority bars?
I do not know the full proceedings of that, because that decision is not in our jurisdiction.
And it breaks my heart that our city won't stand up for one of their own residents who put hundreds of thousands of dollars into their downtown business. It doesn't make any sense to me. Why would the PLCB swoop in on Wayne, but not Yorgos, or not any of these other establishments? It doesn't, it doesn't seem like this is a fair level playing field. So how are we promoting diversity and equity and inclusion and minority wealth if we can't open businesses up in this city without losing the money we put into them and being robbed of them? 'Cause I'll tell you this, regardless of what, Catalina's didn't shoot anybody, Catalina's didn't stab anybody, Catalina's didn't beat anybody up, and I worked there for four years and nobody just ran up and punched me in my head. So it's like, I don't understand how you can fault a business. And we can play pretend like it was a state decision. The state doesn't know anything about Lancaster City or Lancaster City's issues after freaking 10:00 PM. No, we do. And I'm pretty sure there was decisions that were made, because it was brought to me before that meeting even happened, that we were about to lose our liquor license. It's been something that was discussed, hell, they were mad as hell when we were opened and Yorgos did that million dollar renovation. This isn't something that wasn't a collective between these people around here. And it's sad. It's sad that we can work here, we can slave here, but we can't own shit that's actually gonna make us some money in this town because we're gonna be robbed of it? And I just wanted to say that out loud, sorry.
Please come up to the podium and give your name, and keep your comments to three minutes,
Good evening. My name is Vincenzo Andres Rosal Yarini, and I live on Locust Street. I'm with Lancaster Healthcare Rights Committee of Poor People First PA. When my family and I moved here from Puerto Rico in 2015 to have a better life due to economic problems leaving many teachers jobless due to school closures, we thought that migrants were given a chance in Lancaster City, and that it is a diverse place. But when we arrived, I realized that wasn't the case. My mom struggled getting a job as a teacher despite having a degree and years of experience, but she was only able to get a job as an assistant for teachers. My grandmother was also a teacher in Puerto Rico and had the same problems as my mother, and she's also currently having problems trying to get Medicaid, in which, thanks to Poor People First, they've been helping us with that currently. This has been a constant problem that the poor face in our system, or they are forced to leave their homes in order to survive and make a living elsewhere, just to be treated the same, or even worse, within the new community they moved, because our system is global and is the root of our problem. Lancaster City is not a city that is authentic. It is like any other community across the globe, because we operate under the same system. In every community, there are poor working class people who are forced to accept low wage jobs in order to get by, not being given access to the healthcare they need, and trying to find places to live that they can afford without having to face the fears of eviction or having to sleep on the streets. Much like my family migrated here to survive, I know people who have and are migrating out of Lancaster City and County for similar reasons. The mayor stated last year during the press conference after the protest broke out when Ricardo Muniz was shot and killed by Lancaster City Police, that we need to address poverty and mental health care. They didn't admit their role in the problems. About a week, a week or so before all this happened, the Lancaster City Council and administration allowed healthcare profiteers to re-zone away healthcare infrastructure in our community, furthering gentrification. If we are going to address poverty and what causes it, then we need to admit how serious this crisis is and how we must tackle it. The research project we have been a part of with Franklin Marshall College professors and students shows signs of the migration of the poor due to things like gentrification, low-paying jobs, lack of access to needed healthcare, and inability to find housing. They are migrating to other parts of Lancaster County or leaving Lancaster County altogether. Today, we are sharing this one pager with information from the draft report. We need people to recognize how important it is to address these issues from the bottom up, because when we lift from the bottom, we all rise.
Please come up to the podium, and then hold your, your name and your address, and hold your statement to three minutes, please.
I will. Curtis Yancey, Willow Street. So I spent the last 13 years volunteering and working with homeless folks. Nine of those years were here at TLC, Tabor, now tenfold. One of the largest reasons that I left, and what I spent kind of the last two years working on, was trying to get Tabor to advocate for its clients, like, actually advocate for its clients. I left in 2020 for another position that, because of the pandemic, disappeared. I spent the last year getting to know folks. They advocate for themselves on a level that should put the whole city to shame. You've heard from Millie, you've heard from Mickey, you've heard from Tammy, you've heard from Jessica, you've heard from Matt, I could go on. This is a systemic problem. Poverty in Lancaster is a systemic choice. The money is here. Water Street raises millions of dollars a year. Tabor, hundreds of thousands of dollars a year. Since 2018, at least, since the change of leadership at TLC, there have been a minimum of 10 empty rooms at TLC, and I'm pretty sure there's 10 empty rooms right now that could house folks. That's right.
There's a whole floor.
That's right.
There was like, not even used at all. It was like, three families that was on that floor, and it was like, 13 or 14 rooms that was empty.
Yeah, that's the perfect...
And I'm still saying that they didn't have any beds available.
Yep. And, and that's the perfect segue, that's exactly right. They built a $1.2 million facility in 2016, around the same time they decided, we don't wanna do emergency shelter services anymore, we're gonna stop at 5:00 PM, and not only that, we're not gonna be open on the weekends. So, as I've heard many times, if you're a single mom who gets put out on a Friday and you don't get to Water Street before 5:00 PM, you are screwed all weekend, all weekend long. And they're still fundraising as if they're in emergency shelter, as if they're a mission. What's going on? Someone obviously can go and call the liquor board and let them know, oh, hey, there's some shady shit going on in Lancaster, but no one can go to Water Street and say, hey, open up your facility? Right?
Everybody's helping, girl, I just, I'm just sitting here saying that, oh, I'm Those with the healthcare guard, just sitting here saying that, "Oh, if you have any kind of signs of COVID, we're gonna go ahead and push you away. Don't come, you can't come into that." Like, they will send you away, legit.
Yep.
And you already know, Curtis, I was Tabor's Prime of the Year last year. They plastered my face all over the extra gift and those, and didn't help me as soon as the pandemic hit. But when the pandemic hit and I lost my job, well, they kept telling me to call 211. But I was Prime of the Year.
Yep. And here's the thing. Here's the thing, right? You all did this, and I'm thankful. I am thankful that Clipper Stadium was open last weekend. Here's the thing, this moratorium has been coming. It's been extended three times, and now we're having folks begging to extend it again. Why was Clipper Stadium not open every weekend? Right? Because someone put a B in someone's bonnet saying, "Hey, we've got an eviction ending in like seven days. We're gonna have a major crisis." And E.B., Justin E.B., can say all he wants, there's not a crisis. And Layman, Craig Layman, can say, "There's not a crisis now, and there won't be a crisis in the future." We have those 2,000 applications right now waiting that prove that to be a lie, not to mention the fact that that's a small percentage of the folks that actually applied, and all the folks that don't know about it or feel so dejected by the system. Listen, I wasn't radicalized by any of the traumas that some of the folks in this city are dealing with, right? But I'm with them. Because this system traumatized me, watching us pull people out of the river for years and never ask, "Why are they falling in that river?" Should shame everyone on city council, should shame everyone here. And Mayor, Danine, we have so many common friends. I want you to be an amazing mayor. Earn the raise. That's what we're asking.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm John Mina of Strasburg, Pennsylvania. Wow, I'm just looking at everyone here, and I hope you all feel what I'm feeling right now, 'cause your city has spoken. Like, these aren't manufactured stories, and I know you guys believe it, I know that. The issue that I have tonight, everyone's asked. They, not nicely, I don't know if you deserve the nice part, but everyone is asking. And my statement to this council, to you, Mayor, is this much. We need to treat this housing crisis like our lives depended on it right now. It's not going anywhere. My friends, my family around here, I hear your story, I hear your pain, and it agonizes me. And as an empath, I'm just, I can't imagine what is going on. And just to be able to sit here, it's not like any local, state, or federal governing body didn't know this was coming. Let's be realistic about that. We knew the pandemic was gonna have a historic impact on our economy. Like, we knew that a year ago, that you didn't have to go and be an economics professor or major. We knew we were shutting down the economy. We knew that was gonna trickle down, and that was gonna adversely affect people who do not have good working jobs, the jobs that were customer-facing, and black and brown people disproportionately, just like COVID did. So this is not anything new. This is not something you guys are blindsided about. And what I wanna continue to stress is that we don't have to accept what the city has put out, or the county. It's not just a you thing. I'm not personally calling any of you out. I want you to be very clear. I will work with you. If you work with me, I will do that. I have no problem doing that. And I have no problem coming to you with solutions, no problem with doing that. Because I work with the other side of the aisle at the community, at the commissioners' meetings, and they're not so helpful, for obvious political reasons. So it is, it's not here that I'm not here to work with you all. That's not the problem. I just wanna continue to put an outsider's lens, is that they have asked, they have asked as nicely as they possibly can. And the reality is, and before we even get to this next part, which is the mobilization and the action, is there's more of us. There's more of the working class than there is of the governing body and there is of the rich ruling class, right? We have the numbers. But why do we have to do this fight? Just do it. Just do it. And my statement to you, because everyone's already asked nicely, is, fight the housing crisis like your life depended on it. Thank you.
Thank you.
As the poor and the wealthy die every day, like, they're not living, they're just surviving. So we wanna live.
Okay, at this point, we move on to reporter the mayor.
Thank you. This is a very timely conversation as I brief you on where we stand with the American Rescue Plan funds, which have just, a portion of which has just arrived. So Lancaster City has received $39.5 million in American Rescue Plan Act funds in response to the COVID-19 public health emergency. And this audience is very familiar with these funds. You also understand that the county has received an additional $108 million, and every municipality across the county has also received in total an additional $40 million as well. And the school district of Lancaster has received $40 million, and other school districts across the county have also received those funds. So you all know these basics. Based on the initial guidance from U.S. Treasury, these funds can be used in a few main ways: responding to COVID-19 and its negative economic impacts, replacing lost municipal revenue, water and sewer infrastructure, and broadband investments. Funds need to be committed by December 31st, 2024, and spent by December 31st, 2026. We've all just been having this conversation about the level of poverty in the city of Lancaster as a city that is 7.3 square miles with about 60,000 residents. We know that the city is 40% Hispanic, 13% Black, 38% White, 4% Asian, and 4% multiracial, and has disproportionately high poverty, low incomes, and disproportionately high taxes compared with Lancaster County as a whole. This once-in-a-generation investment must be made with great care and thought about what is most needed in this specific community with transparency and through engagement with our community in how to invest these public dollars. And I would say that this has been an impromptu feedback session about what is needed in the city of Lancaster as it relates to these public dollars. So what you can expect next, timing is dictating that we will bring one water infrastructure request to council at next week's Public Works meeting. This will be the only request that we are bringing to you before a public engagement process, and it is really a matter of timing. Beyond this single request, you can expect a more robust strategy document based on the strategic plan that we are in the midst of updating. We are planning to come back to you, council, within the next month or so with an outline of the strategic plan and identifying key funding areas and potential priorities for your input. At that point, we'll also be gathering feedback from the community at large about the funding areas residents and stakeholders would like the city to prioritize. All proposed ARPA investments will need to come before city council for your approval. In addition to this process, I'd like to share with you conceptually about how we're thinking about these investments in broad terms, very broad terms. So briefly, we expect that some portion of these funds will go to stabilizing the city's fiscal position. This will not be a majority of the funds. Another portion will be specified to ARPA-allowed infrastructure and broadband investments. We know that broadband is as fundamental a utility as electric or water, and COVID has shown us this, especially for communities who are like Lancaster, who are poor and who do not have access to high-speed broadband, and that inhibits their ability to go to school, access telemedicine, all the rest of it. And based on research and public surveys about pressing needs and priorities for city residents, supporting a sustainable and equitable economic recovery from COVID with an emphasis, and I'm gonna underscore this, an emphasis on affordable housing. Council and neighbors, we look forward to working with you through these next steps, and I thank you for engaging with us in this process to utilize this money in the most forward-looking, the most long and impactful way that we collectively can muster as a community with this once-in-a-generation. I can't even, I can't even wrap my head around the fact that we have this opportunity. It's never going to come again, at least not in our lifetime. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. That brings us to the report of the, that brings us to the report of the president. I have nothing to report for Ishmael. I have nothing to report for President Ishmael Adel. I'm sorry, what did you wanna say? No, the comment portions are done, ma'am. Any comments from council? Anything from council? I have nothing to say at this time. I call for an adjournment.
Most to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.